And so I would now like to open the Select Board meeting of February 8, 2024, at 6:30 PM and ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the executive session agenda.
Good evening. Item number one is to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if the Chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board in the town, and the Chair does so declare to discuss the matter of Five Star Building Four versus Town of Sherburne pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444 (2007), Sherburne Library. Item number two is discussion regarding collective bargaining strategy for negotiations with APSC Council 93, Local 335, the DPW Bargaining Unit pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444 (2007).
Excellent. Thank you. Anybody have any changes or revisions to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, I do so declare that we need to discuss these two items in executive session to protect the bargaining interest of the town. So I move that we go to executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, and we'll do a roll call vote. Eric, Sip first. Eric?
Yep, I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
I.
Marion?
I.
And I am I as well. We've got the recording on, so welcome everyone. It's February 8, 2024, and I'm now opening the exec, the open session of the Select Board tonight, and I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to please read the open session agenda.
Good evening. After I read the agenda, the Select Board can vote to amend or approve the agenda. I have, don't have a public comment for tonight. Items may be taken out of order and topics not anticipated 48 hours in advance may be added. At 7:15, we have a public hearing, which is the consideration of a transfer of A, B, C, C licenses for 33 and 33A North Main Street. Item number two is the update on the status of the Sherburne Library project and related litigation, Five Star Building Four versus the Town of Sherburne. Item number three is a consideration of a reappointment to the Sherburne Cultural Council for Jennifer Devon, her term to expire February 8, 2027, and for the Sherburne Cultural Council, a correction to a term date for Kathy Horrigan-Dye to amend the term date to expire on 12/30/2024. Item number four was a municipal energy aggregation update presented by Jeremy Marsette. Item number five is the consideration of approving the March 5, 2024 Presidential Primary Warrant. Jeremy will present that for Jackie for tonight. Item number six is consideration of opening and closing warrant to add a Community Preservation Act for the annual town meeting of 2024. Item number seven is review and discussion in consideration of draft warrant articles for 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Item number eight is the FY 2025 Operating Budget presented by Jeremy Marsette. Item number nine is the American Rescue Plan Act, AOPA Funding Update presented by Jeremy Marsette. Item number 10 is the Paper Warrant, Draft Minutes of December 7th and December 28th, and a one-day liquor license for the Sherburne Community Center for Bridal Shale for Pauline Bounce. Item number 11 is consideration of routine business, which is Select Board reports and Town Administrator reports.
Excellent. Thank you, Diane. Do I have any recommended revisions or adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, roll. Please mute yourself if you're not on the call. And we'll do a roll call vote. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
I.
Marion?
I.
And I am I as well. So the public hearing will start in 10 minutes. So right now, what I'd like to do is discuss the update on the status of the library project and related litigation. And do you want to, is Brian still here? Do you want to introduce that subject, Brian, just so you can explain it to the public?
No, I'm happy to introduce it. So as I think everyone knows, that the library construction project went on for many years and going back to 2020, we sued the builder and some of the other parties, the surety and the consulting firm that was helping them. And I think as most people know, we reopened the library last year, and then on January 16th of this year, we got the full certificate, certificate of occupancy. In the background, over the last couple of years, we've been negotiating on our lawsuit against those parties, looking for a mediation path forward. And in early February, the Town of Sherburne did agree to settle litigation that arose from the project. And I think I'll turn it back over to you, Jeff, to, if you like, to talk about getting that approved in a public section.
Yes, we're, we're going to take a Select Board vote tonight on approving the settlement, and the library trustees has already voted on approving the settlement. So we're unanimous in our team effort in reaching a resolution of the remaining issues with Travelers and Five Star Building Company. So Paul, do you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move that this Sherburne Select Board approve and enter into a settlement agreement of the litigations described by you with Five Star and the other Travelers and others.
Excellent. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call vote. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
I.
Marion?
I.
And I am I as well, 5 to 0. I've got 7:08, so I think we'll go on to warrant article item three. The first is the reappointment of Jennifer Devon to the Sherburne Cultural Council for a term to expire February 8, 2027.
So moved.
I don't think, yeah, so is there a second?
Second.
I don't see Jennifer here, so let's just do a roll call vote. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
I.
Marion?
I.
And I am I as well. And then we're correcting an error in the previous appointment where Kathy Horrigan-Dye to amend her term to expire on 12/30/2024.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
I.
Marion?
I.
And I am I as well. So that's terrific. I think we should probably, I don't think we have time, Jeremy, do we, to do the municipal energy update, or should we?
I think we'll need a little bit more time with that.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, Michael Lesser is also joining us for that.
For that, okay. So then, let's just pause. Let's take a break for a couple of minutes. We can't really start early. So the hearing starts at 7:15, and it's 7:09. So I think we'll take a brief five-minute break and reconvene at 7:15 for the public hearing on the A, B, C, C licenses. Okay. We've got two more people to return, but I think we'll get started, and Eric and Steven will join us shortly. We're now going to have the 7:15 public hearing, which is consideration of transfer of A, B, C, C light liquor licenses for 33 and 33A North Main Street. So we're going to start that. I'm going to read the notice of public hearing before we discuss that. So the notice is the Sherburne Select Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Thursday, February 8, 2024, at 7:15 PM on the application of ZEATF LLC Laura Robbins, manager for the transfer of a common victular license for all kinds of alcoholic beverages at 33 North Main Street. Immediately following, the Sherburne Select Board will hold a public hearing on the application of ZEATF LLC Mark Williams, manager for the transfer of a retail packaged goods store license at 33A North Main Street. Oral and written comments are invited, signed by Jeremy Marsette, Town Administrator. So is there any discussion? I think we, do we need to read anything else, Jeannie, or is that all you needed us to read? And we can just see if there's any discussion? We can just put.
That's all you really, go ahead.
Go ahead. So I think, is there any, does anyone have any discussion, or should we just move to make the transfer?
You can.
There should be a presentation by the applicant.
Okay.
Both the applicants are here.
All right, that's fine. So Laura, do you want to go first? You're listed first.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good, good. How are you?
Good. In terms of a presentation, we are making an effort right now to purchase the, the property at 33 North Main, that is the Heritage, and my partner, Mark Williams, also Sherburne resident, and I are going to be closing on the property, fingers crossed, this month or the beginning of next month. And part of that purchase is the transfer of the license to sell the liquor for, for the restaurant, people who attend and for events, and also packaged liquor to go in the space that is called Provisions right now. And our goal is to keep it the same as it is. We're just renaming, rebranding, and I'm going to keep it as a restaurant that sells food and liquor.
Excellent. And Mark, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I really don't have anything additional to add. I think Laura summarized it quite well. Thank you.
All right. So I don't see any public comment. Paul, do we now take a vote? You want to make a motion?
Check if there's comments at the board itself. Usually you bring it, don't you bring it back to the board after the public comment?
Yeah, does anyone have comments? I don't see any hands raised.
We should say that the hearing is now open for people to make any comments. Are there any comments? Then, then let's close that part of it, and let's bring it to the board for us.
All right, that sounds good. I'm a rookie. So is there any comments from the board to begin with on the proposed transfer?
Just that I support this and, you know, thank Laura Mark for, you know, coming in and taking it over. And I also want to thank Jen Ziskin, I see her on the call, for just years of being a great stakeholder in the town as well. And just glad to continue that, you know, this asset to the community is continuing.
Totally agree. Any other Select Board input? Hearing none, is there any public comment? Okay, then, as Paul indicated, we'll bring this back to the board to vote on the transfer. Now, do you want to make a motion, Paul?
Yes, so I move that we approve the transfer of, well, only doing one at this point. So we're doing the restaurant common victular and liquor license.
You want to vote on them separately? We're actually doing two. One is 33, I think is the restaurant, and 33A is the, what I call the Sherburne Out, but whatever it's called, the affiliated takeaway building.
So did the hearing we just have apply to both?
Yes, I read the hearing, it said both. Yeah, I can read it to you again if you want. It, it included both.
Okay, so then I'll expand the motion to include approval of the transfer of the liquor license, the package store liquor license.
Right. The packaged goods is 33A, and the 33 North Main is the the primary restaurant and venue. All right, so is there a second for Paul's motion?
A second.
Second.
All right, roll call. Eric?
I.
Steven?
I.
Paul?
I.
Marion?
I.
And I am I as well. So thank, thank you, Jen, as Eric pointed out, and we're looking forward to the new operation. So thank you, everyone, Laura and Mark, for stepping up.
Before you close the hearing, or you can close it, but I do, I do need at least three of you to come in to sign the paperwork tomorrow, so I can get it off to the A, B, C, C.
Yep, I'll be, I'll definitely be there. I know that Steven can't make it. Can two other people make it?
I can make it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Just wanted to say thank you so much. Looking forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item on the agenda is the municipal energy aggregation that Jeremy's going to lead us through.
Sure. And also with me is Michael Lesser, the Chair of the Energy and Sustainability Committee.
Yep.
So as you know, the Department of Public Utilities has finally approved Sherburne's aggregation plan, which is great. And now we have the opportunity to take advantage of the winter pricing, which apparently from our mass power choice, our consultant, is there's some favorable pricing in the market now. If we don't take advantage of that, we might want to wait for a longer period of time, say it's the next fall. So there's an opportunity to take advantage of some favorable pricing in the market, but it doesn't mean there's some, a fair amount of activity that you folks will be involved in coming up. So Michael and I wanted to give you a bit of an update and preview of that timeline. So I'm just going to share a quick timeline screen, and just kind of highlight some of the dates. So we had a meeting, the Energy and Sustainability Committee has met with Mass Power Choice recently, and we went through a program launch timeline. And this is a summary here. This information is also in your packet. I think it might be towards the end of the summary information for this agenda item, but I think this is probably the most important slide or piece of information for you to be aware of as far as the different categories of events in the timeline. First of all, there's just a supply procurement. So we need to go out to the market, which Mass Power Choice will help with, and get the good pricing that we would like, and also the type of pricing that we would like. So this is supply procurement. Then, after that, once we execute into a contract, there'd be a fair amount of public education that Mass Power Choice will help with, coming soon, postcards and opt-out notice. Two community information sessions would be held, all of that prior to the actual launch of, of the program. With, with the actual launch by this timeline being in the early June of this year. So there's a kind of a lead up to that, but there's some early actions for the board. Mainly, we would ask that Mass Power Choice help us get indicative pricing on the market, or just prior to your next meeting. You currently have February 22nd as your next meeting on the calendar. They have a 23rd here, it's actually the 22nd. So we would have indicative pricing back, which is sort of a good indication of what the market's like, back the day of your next Select Board meeting. The Energy and Sustainability Committee would have a meeting and help pre-screen some of that information for you, and then bring it to the Select Board and Executive Session to discuss and give some guidance. And then, following that, the week or two weeks following that, we would receive executable prices and contracts to be, a contract to be able to sign for that procurement. So that's really the, the imminent thing on your radar. And then, following that, the Energy and Sustainability Committee, with help of Town Administration, will do all this public education and do the program launch. But we just definitely wanted to queue up with you the timeline and some of the actions you need.
Can I ask a quick question when you finish on this? I know it's an opt-out plan, so people will default to be included, but aren't there going to be several tiers? Like, people can choose varying degrees of renewable energy? So you're not really opting in, but, but there's got to be some point when you pick which tier that you want to be billed at, right?
Correct, yeah. And Michael can get into more detail. I want to give him the floor for a bit to be able to.
It doesn't show on the schedule. In other words, an opt-out deadline.
But there are, the plan included three different tiers of different amounts of green energy, one of which was, was, was the, essentially the opt-out.
Yeah, okay. But in other words, there would need to be a date in here when those people have to submit their tier selection also.
Yeah, the opt-out notice is sometime in April is when the opt-out notice gets sent to customers, and the opt-out deadline is in the middle of May.
So I see that here. So in other words, the opt-out deadline and submittal is really not the opt-out. It's also for people opting in to pick the choice they want, right? It's a little misleading to me.
Michael, yeah, here, Michael's in the, at the room next door here, but.
I noticed, I know, I recognize the background, Michael. Go ahead.
Uh, can you hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, the way it works to go next level is that essentially the three prices that, that the town will have in its program. You can opt out of that whole program altogether. But with the program where you, or there are three prices, three types, three options offered, that there is one option that is called the default option. That's what everybody falls into unless they opt out, or unless they then also call in and say, I want to go into the first option or a third option.
Okay.
Default option. And the default option is the most interesting one for a policy discussion with the Select Board on, in two weeks from now, because that's the one where there's some issues about how much renewable energy to include in that default, and how it compares to ever sources basic service that most people use now.
Yeah.
So the game is a little bit of seeing what prices we get for what could be the equivalent of basic service under this program.
Yeah.
And whether there's enough savings there so that we could also add in some extra renewable energy, because that would be helpful to, for the town to meet its targets for lessening stuff there. And, and this program is a real opportunity for the town to, to read the climate action goals, because the cost of additional renewable energy in this program is probably 50% of the, of the savings in terms of avoiding cost of carbon emissions. So it's a good unity. And, and adding a bunch of renewable energy, let's say 20 percentile points more, is like a two and a half to 3% increase in the average bills. And we can go over the numbers by type of customer, how much it means per month, which might be like somewhere from $3 to $13 a month, $7 average. And, and we could add more than 20%, or you could add less. But those are, I know, that's the kind of policy thing for us to discuss when we see the actual prices. We can go over what those options would look like, and how much we can gain in meeting our climate reduction, because eventually we want to get to 100%, because that'll make a big difference in cutting the town's emissions by 50% by 2030. So I'll stop there.
All right. Marion has her hand raised. Go ahead, Marion.
Oh, yeah, this is really from Michael and maybe Jeremy too. Looking at the timeline carefully and thinking practically about how this is going to roll out, and just what you said just now, Michael, tells us that it's going to be a tricky job to get the public educated on this. It has to be done carefully. So I, I noticed that you have an opt-out notice before you start the public education. Maybe those little triangles aren't exactly where they're actually going to be, but I would say, once you've decided on what the options will be, public education needs to be launched right away before you give people the option of opting out.
I think it goes hand in hand, literally. That schedule is somewhat based on what the state generally requires, but it's also the schedule that dozens of other towns have used, because the consultant has worked with many, and they helped us prepare the schedule there. And that, that comes from them, actually. But yes, we have to do that kind of education. And we did some a while ago, but right, who knows what people remember, as you could probably think yourself. But yes, it's, it's an important thing to start the education as soon as possible and get out the information. Agreed.
One thing, Marion, that's not on that timeline, is that the launch of the website. The consultant also puts together a website specific for Sherburne's program that will be, be launched somewhere in that timeline. We can get the specific date of that, but, you know, the earlier the better. But there needs to be some level of decision and, and, you know, some information available before they can do that.
Yeah, the website's actually ready.
Oh, okay.
Specifics on it, actually. So that we worked on before. So, so that'll be quite quick.
Okay, thanks.
Paul can tell us if this is legal, but I, based on the timing, I feel like we should have a handout at annual town meeting on the table in the back or something, if we're allowed to, because that's, that's perfect timing to educate people.
All right, it's a good idea.
Yeah.
That's legal.
Yeah. I mean, it just coincides with them having to decide in early May. All right, do we need, so we're basically to be continued is the. All right, do we need, so we're basically uh to be continued is the next step, right?
You'll schedule and we'll be scheduled for an executive session in two weeks.
All right, we'll be here.
Great.
Thank you.
Exciting, good.
It is very exciting and thanks for persevering to you and I know Fred or whoever on the whole team there.
Oh yeah, Fred, uh Cunningham, Anthony Lordback, Tom Trader.
Yeah, yeah.
There, it's been a lot of, there will be a lot of work on it.
Excellent, and they are thanks to the team.
Yeah, they all would be here tonight, but there's a competing meeting that they're they're in upstairs, so.
Okay, that's fine.
Everybody, go look at a sustainable landscaping thing that'll be available online.
Before they all leave, I I just wanted to comment on the. On our website, when you first log on, you see a photograph of the solar panels on the uh fire station. And they look beautiful and they look very efficient and there's so many of them. Uh amazing sight. I love it.
That they're gonna power it up very soon, which is remarkable. So uh it's exciting that we're gonna start getting it much sooner than I we expected.
So that looks like it's gonna generate a lot of power. I was expecting to see like eight or nine panels, but this is like a lot of panels there. It's so that's gonna be more than the building's gonna need, right?
Percentage, it it doesn't, it is not gonna be a net power uh input to the the grid, but it's a substantial percentage of their use ball. Uh it's it's a great uh system.
And it's an owned, the panels are owned, right? Not not or leased as we did at the um DPW.
Exactly, it's our ownership, so uh it's a great return and plus we're gonna get the about a third of thirty percent of the cost back from the uh. Under the IRA bill, the tax credit go to municipalities, so. Actually got it a lot less costly than when we first put in the proposal.
Yep.
Congratulations for getting it done, which is why I brought it up. Congratulations to everybody involved. Well done.
You're welcome and thank you.
All right, thank you. And I think I, because Jackie's not here, Jeremy, are you gonna handle the primary warrant, presidential primary warrant? Or who's gonna handle that?
Yeah, she just asked if she could make it tonight, but she asked that. Uh the board consider the presidential primary warrant um as included in your um your packet and. That you would uh vote on that and then um make yourselves available, at least three of you to come in to sign this um as soon as you could. So I think she's got um the motion in there um. Move to a move to vote to approve the March fifth, two thousand twenty four presidential primary warrant as presented. For Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty Nine, Section Ten.
Okay.
Cut.
Go ahead, Paul.
On on this uh election warrant, this, the presidential preference primary. And then there's the election of the state committee man, and then there's the election of the state committee women. For each of the major parties. And then there's a category for town committee. For the town of Sherburne, and this is the Democratic Town Committee and the Republican Town Committee. I'm actually on the ballot uh for one of these town committees. I was former chair of one of these town committees and I've been a member of it for a very long time. So I'm gonna recuse myself. On on this simply because I'm on the ballot here.
Okay.
Is that something that won't recuse? Cause I mean, inevitably, we're all like Marion might be on the ballot. No, I I know it's a different one, different ballot. That's the primary, sorry. But in general, we look at these ballots, uh we're all elected officials. Isn't one of us on some ballot that we approve at some time? I've never heard of someone. Recusing, I mean, do what's in your comfort level. I'm not trying to.
Along those lines, if we all plan to vote in the uh in the election, we should recuse ourselves. I mean, I I don't really see that you need to recuse yourself, Paul.
I don't have a financial interest. I don't get paid for being on the town committee. I I just for the sake of appearances.
Okay, that's fine.
Whatever.
So Jeremy already read it. Uh does someone want to make the motion then? Or do you want me to make the motion that we approve the um presidential primary uh as as read by Jeremy?
Second.
Second. All right, Eric.
Hi.
Stephen.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
And I am I as well and Paul is, what do we call you? Absent or abstain? Abstain?
Recused.
Recused, okay.
Great, we'll have that prepared. So when you, you know, wait, if you can come in and get the ABC license signed as well, we'll have these.
Yeah, yeah, we got three things to sign, I think. We got the transfer or this. Probably something else, maybe I forgot. All right, sounds good, thank you. The the settlement, that's right. So um the next is the uh Community Preservation Act that we were gonna debate about. Uh you wanna introduce the subject, Jeremy, about adding this to the warrant or or who's?
Um I I could just queue it up for your discussion.
Okay.
In in, you know, this this has been discussed several times by the select board and at your last meeting, it was noted that there might be a um. You might want to consider reopening the warrant of the town meeting to add uh add this warrant article. So. In your packet is so a draft, some draft language that has been was put together. That's actually language that we used or really lifted from the Community Preservation. Coalition website. Uh so it'd be a good basis as a start, but certainly would would need to be tweaked should the select board want to add it. To the the warrant. Um and then also in your packet is just a an additional copy of the previous uh presentation that was discussed with the board.
Yeah, and as I think I've said before, I mean, I'm fine with putting it on the warrant. I'm just not in favor of that article. So I mean, I'm I'm in favor of allow, if if the select board collectively. Wants to allow the residents to vote on this, that that seems fine to me, but I would vote against this initiative.
I I I'd like to comment. Um I I I wouldn't vote against it if it came up. The two other times it's come up back in the recent years and not so recent years, I voted for it both times.
Yeah.
But I do understand the uh feel, the reason why some people. Uh and and you included are not in favor of this. I think it's valid. So.
We're only voting on whether to add it to the warrant or to open the warrant to add it, so.
Right, right.
I just was saying, I I I would probably not vote for that unless other people feel strongly we should.
Right.
Good of against putting it on the warrant. Uh I rarely do that. I like to put things before it. It's just failed a couple times for for very obvious reasons. I think it's almost insulting to say. You didn't want it, you didn't want it, how about now? I think Sherburne has done phenomenally better than all surrounding communities as far as preserving land and for certain preservations. I um, what do you call it? You know, to say it doesn't raise the tax, raises semantics. It adds a fee onto the taxes. We have the, I like I said last, we had the fifth highest tax, average taxes in the entire state. And when I looked at the list of top ten, I know we have lower property values and at least a top eight. And just to do another thing that's not needed and just to um and put another burden on the taxpayer, it's just something. That's I'm gonna vote against even putting it on the warrant.
Okay.
Yeah, I I respect that and even if uh I I also would vote not to put it on the warrant. Uh but maybe for different reasons, I I think that to uh. Get something like this, that would, you know, mar- very marginally, but still it's a tax increase. Uh it takes, it's gonna take a lot of public relations work. If we did want it to pass and if we were behind it. And I really, I I personally don't have the bandwidth. And I'm not sure as a as a board, we have the bandwidth to do that work and put it on the ballot. Because if we put it on the ballot, there's no point in putting it on unless we really are willing to go to bat for it.
As it's the, not just the education, but all the analysis of, I know Jeremy's done a fair amount already. We have the package in here, but. You know, in some ways, the historical perspective isn't that useful because people were getting a hundred percent in two thousand and three or whatever it was. So it's really. To me, it's pretty much focused on.
Between thirty and forty, it's not nothing. And you know, we're subsidizing other towns. Uh it it because uh the money in the pot is partly ours.
Yeah.
So and that's, there's that and you know, at the lowest level, I think. It may turn out that people in the town uh override Eric's vote and Jeff's vote and and vote for it. I don't know how it would come out. But I know that it's not an easy sell. So uh unless we're, you know, really are sure we have the time to put in to. Uh to sell it, then I I I'm not in favor of putting it on the warrant and having it be voted down again.
Well, I guess I can say that I'm I'm discouraged with this discussion. Um I mean, I. I think it is worthwhile. Um a- at the least, I think that it is worthwhile putting it before the advisory committee and having them. Um evaluate the the value of CPA. Um again, I I think. My my position really is that, I mean, obviously, I was on the advisory committee for six years and was the chair for several. And you know, I have a a pretty solid overview of the town's financial situation and I know that. A lot of people um are concerned about the taxes. Um I do believe that in my. Six years on the advisory committee, the tax rate went down every single year. Um so I I am not a person who is. Generally in favor of doing things to raise taxes. Um but I think that sort of looking at big picture. Um you know, you've got spending and then you have revenue and um I feel pretty confident that we have done. Uh a very good job over the past six years in um reducing our spending and making sure that it's fairly lean. There is. I I don't believe that there's a whole lot to cut out of the budget. Um you know, there's always a little bit here and there, but it's not something that is going to be a a major. Needle mover. Um and then when you look on the revenue side of things, the problem is that. Um we are so reliant on the residential tax levy for, I mean, it's over ninety percent of our revenue. There's so few opportunities to have a reliable revenue stream that is outside of the tax levy. Um this is one of the few little straws that we could be um sipping from and we are choosing not to. Um so to to me, that's where the value is, is is having. Any any kind of revenue stream at all that is outside of the tax levy. Um you know, and when we look at the types of things that can be funded by it, I mean. Jeremy did the analysis over the past, whatever it was, twenty twenty five years. On average, it's been about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year that was spent by the town that would have been eligible for CPA. Um it and even if we look at just this year's capital improvement plan, there's. You know, over a million dollars worth of stuff that um would be eligible for CPA funding. Um and you know, if we set the um surcharge at one percent, which is, you know, the lowest. And we also add the hundred thousand dollar um uh uh exemption.
Yeah.
I think it was like uh we'd be looking at something like two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So so that would be approximately the level that we're looking at and that ends up being a hundred and sixty dollars on the average tax bill, which. Again, it's not nothing, but it's not huge, you know, and for that. We are getting a revenue stream that's outside of the tax levy. I, you know, I I I feel like. It's just my position uh coming from advisory that that is something that I think that we really should be looking quite hard at and 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 not just dismissing out of hand. That's my position.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. Go ahead, Paul.
So at the last meeting, I was undecided and asked for it to be put over and and one of the things I hoped for. Was that when it became a formal agenda item. That there would be public comment on it. So I'm wondering, is there anybody out there from the public who wants to be heard? Pro or con on this?
As far as I can tell, we only have uh town employees and Margo on the call. You mean besides the people that are here tonight?
If there's anybody who feels strongly enough to come to this meeting and. Either advocate for it or or oppose it.
You know, honestly, uh most people in town don't know what it is. It and uh we all do and we assume others do, but most people don't know what it is. So I mean, I find Steve's thinking actually quite compelling. And that's why I was for it the last two times that it was voted.
I would speak if that's possible.
I, yeah, in a moment, Mike. I I just wanted to just uh finish my my sentence.
I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm happy to hear from you, Margot. Um but uh I I would say that if someone who's as. Um knowledgeable and articulate as Steve. Uh were to lead the charge to inform the people of the town about this. Uh I would back him up.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm I'm happy to do that. I'll 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 do the presentations to advisory at the public hearing at the town meeting. You know, if we feel the need for an additional informational session, you know, I'm happy to to lead there. You know, I'm I'm assuming Jeremy can help me also. He's already done a bunch of the 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 legwork on it. Um but 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 I'm happy to to lead the charge on the messaging and, you know, I think that um we can also reach out to the. Uh Community Preservation Coalition. I think they um are usually pretty happy to help people out uh with uh informational sessions and things like that, so. Um I mean, realistically, I I think that. Uh I I would like advisory to have a look at it and have a think about it, right? And they can't do that if it's not on the warrant, so.
Uh we do, Dan is here tonight. I I don't know if he wants to weigh in, but uh do you want to say something, Paul?
Well, I I had two other points. The first one was just to find out if the public wanted to comment and it looks like there is a public comment, so I wonder if you could. Get that, but then I had two other points I want.
All right, uh Margo, do you want to uh?
I would just like to say that I supported this initiative on two previous votes. I have one son that lives in Booster, Mass, and one that lives in Leverett, Mass. They both serve in town government. And they extol the virtues of the Community Preservation Act. On and every opportunity that they can and cannot believe that Sherburne has not taken advantage of this. And um I remember a few years back, Paul, I'm not sure how many years ago. You said that you would actually like to do a study or have someone do a study on how much we've actually lost. For all these years that we did not have the Community Preservation Act. And I I really, and the one other thing that I'd like to mention is. Uh there were a few people that were adamantly opposed to the CPA. And one of which was Peter Lifeton, and I could just remember at virtually the last. Save Our Sherburne meeting that was held, he reminded everybody that even though. Um the benefit was down to twenty seven percent, that it was still better than what you'd get on interest in the bank. And so those are just a few points that I wanted to share.
Thank you, Margo.
So here are my two points.
Okay. Please.
The first is that. I don't like the warrant article as written. And I I couldn't support putting it on as written. The problem I have with it is that it leaves wide open. All the critical questions. I would support putting on the warrant an article that was at one percent. And that had a hundred thousand dollar exemption. By not putting that in here, we're leaving it up to advisory, right? I understand Steve's point, but advisory ought to be tackling this thing. But the but the point is that this is the only opportunity the select board would have in this. To define what we're what we're proposing.
Yep.
And so. It makes sense to me to try this act at a very. At the lowest level preliminarily. And see how it goes. We can always increase it later if if we need to. But the one percent corresponds roughly to what the study that Jeremy had done. As as Marco had pointed out, I I had asked for a study about what we had lost or what we might have lost. And when you look at the numbers. And I had I had talked to Jeremy today, it came in. Equivalent to about a. one and a half percent, I think is what Jeremy said. He can he can correct me if I'm wrong. So in other words, the history here has been that the the benefit for the town would have been at the one and a half percent. But I think in initially, one percent is where we ought to be. So if the question is putting this particular article on the warrant, I will vote no. If the question is putting is a article on the warrant that would specify a percentage, and I also want to see a a hundred thousand dollar exemption for homeowners.
I would accept that, Paul. I I I I only put it forth this way because I went around and looked at various other towns who have adopted CPA, you know, in recent years, and all of them did it this way where they left it open on the warrant article and then their motion, you know, as proposed by, you know, whoever's equivalent of the advisory committee specified the number, so that's why I put it in this way. But I'd be happy to amend it and 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 put in at one percent and a hundred thousand dollar exemption if if that's uh if that's if that would get you to vote for it because you're you're the swing vote here, so.
Well, the other point, the last point I want to make is that we've been working with the governor on this municipal modernization act. And as part of that proposed act, our number of funding sources that would provide additional municipal funding. So when we hear about you, we ought to look for other sources of funding other than the property tax. There is going to be a package of options that are available to Sherburne. And I'm pretty sure the bill's gonna pass. I just don't know in the all the negotiations between the House and the Senate, my governor's office, and all the stakeholders, what they all will be. But I can tell you, there's there's quite a few things that people understand that municipalities are are hurting financially in need. Other ways of funding themselves other than endlessly increasing property taxes. So it almost makes sense that if we do something on the Community Preservation Act, it be done with full knowledge of all the options available. Because I I I wouldn't want the community to to commit itself, let's say, to the CPA and then discover, wow, we would get more bang for the buck by going with some other program that might be offered in this modernization act. And so until you see, I mean, it's like going into a restaurant, until you see the whole menu, why order the first thing that you hear? So for that reason also is why I think that if we put this on the warrant, we should put it in as as the minimum. That that way, we still, it it doesn't take away as many options as it would be if we went in like a three percent. Three percent, I think, would foreclose anything else. So as I say, I I think I'm willing to put it on the warrant with those caps that I talked about for these reasons. But as we get towards town meeting, once we get this this modernization act passed, which I I'm I'm pretty sure it's going to be passed before a town meeting. They have to because it includes continuation of remote meetings. And as part of remote meetings like we're doing here that expires in March. So they have to enact this thing in March for us to continue to to do business the way we're doing. We will know what these other options are, and at that point in March, we may want to not pursue this. But for the time being, I'm willing to vote to put it on the warrant at one percent with a hundred percent with a hundred thousand deduction to give a break to people whose properties are 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 worth lower. And see where we go from there before we take a final position as to whether or not we support it. Depending on what the state comes up with for other solutions to municipal funding issues.
Okay. Marion, you have your hand up?
Yeah, um, talk, you you talk about other options, Paul, as if it's either one or the other. It implies that these other options, and you can tell me if this is true, do the other options involved a a surtax? Like the CPA, because if not, it's not either or. You know, given the budget that I see this year and in coming years, it really is really daunting to cover the things that we need to cover. So I would say all of the above. Any opportunity that we have to get streams of funding outside of the tax of the tax uh uh scheme, then we we should consider. So maybe, yeah, tell us more uh about the modernization act. Is it also in involves surcharges?
So there's a variety of things like in- in- increasing the automobile excise tax, increasing the meals tax, increasing the uh housing, uh, uh, rooming.
Hotel, hotel, you mean hotel tax?
Hotel, yes, things like that, but the things that are a little more out of the box are what's called a transfer tax or transfer fee. So like, Antucket has a thing called the land bank who buys property for conservation purposes. The land bank is funded by a fee that's paid for when property is sold.
Right, yeah.
On the sale of the property, there is a fee that's charged. And Antucket wants to expand that. Right now, the the land bank only buys land for open space, conservation, and recreation. They want that expanded to include affordable housing. And Mara Healy has included a local option for communities to adopt the, you know, transfer fees on the sale of real estate that would be usable for affordable housing initiatives and for the open space initiatives. So, and there's a complicated procedure by which the local community um adopts these things. But there's a host of other things, the stuff on liquor licenses. I mean, it's it's this is too complicated to speak for hours on right now.
Yeah, but to be honest with you, I don't see how we could have it analyzed by if we're gonna have advisory public hearing in March, whatever date it is, uh.
Right, I don't think.
I don't think we'll be able to have it. It may not even be approved by advisory's public hearing. It might be by our town meeting, but I'm not sure who would then do all the analysis. I think Marion's right. We should probably just, if people really want to have the CPA on the warrant, it may not be an either or, but I I I would think that analyze all those new options wouldn't be a quick a quick uh process myself.
Well, I'm not sure when to hit them with like our our residents and our taxpayers with, you know, a dozen different ways to collect more money from you. That that's not where I'm at.
No, I know, but but it sounds like the it sounds like the things that may come out of the municipal modernization would be probably not analyzed to the extent that we could explain them to the public by the end of April, I guess, is my uh sort of pessimistic view, maybe, but.
I have a question for for Jeremy or maybe Steve, if you happen to know the answer. If we adopted it at one percent, uh, how difficult is it to change it to one point five, say, if if our if our budget process makes it clear that we desperately need a a free cash flow outside of the tax?
Um, Jeremy might know the specifics more, but I I do know you have an opportunity to change it in the future, but I think each when you adopt it, you do lock yourself in for a certain amount of time. I don't remember. It's three years, five years, what it was.
And like, do we have to take it back to town meeting if we want to go up to one point five? Yeah.
Yes.
I believe you would. If to change the percentages, Marion, yes, it would go back to town meeting.
So I'm wondering if it uh if we're gonna get this passed, would it be worth starting at a slightly higher number than one? And uh in the future, we could reduce it, you know, it's easier to reduce it than to increase it.
Well, uh, the only con is it might be harder to get it approved.
True.
Yeah, I mean, I I feel like based on, you know, the numbers that Jeremy crunched, that the one percent surcharge is a reasonable start. I mean, especially I I don't think that Eric and Jeff's um position is um uh a fringe one in town, we'll say. You know, I think that um a lot of people probably hold that um that general position. Um, so I I I think that uh coming in as as E low uh low commitment as possible is good. Um, and based on our historical trends um of what sorts of projects we just choose to perform. In town, it seems like the one percent um range is reasonable. Um, and again, it's you don't have to spend it every year. You can let it build up for several years, you know. I it's one of the reasons why I was asking um I think David Goldberg about the um tennis court thing, you know, I'm kind of like, oh, well, what would happen if you were to not do it this year? Because maybe we pass CPA and then we let it build up for two or three years, and now we can do that entire project all at once with CPA funds, you know? Um, so it's uh, you know, it really just means that you might have to wait longer to um do certain projects that you have in mind.
Yeah.
Okay, so um what I'm hearing is that um people seem generally okay with Paul's suggestions that we, if we add this to the warrant, we would add it with the language provided modified as Paul suggested to include the one percent and the hundred thousand dollar uh exclusion of uh calculation.
So can I ask a quick question? That's so basically the first hundred thousand of your assessment doesn't count? I think doesn't it doesn't go to that?
Right.
Yeah, so if your house is worth half a million, you take off a hundred thousand. It's not a hundred thousand of taxes.
Yeah, yeah.
Be happy to deduct a hundred thousand from my taxes and then apply three percent. No, that's not how it works. It's from the the valuation of the house. So if the house is worth five hundred thousand, and the tax on that is, let's say, five thousand.
Yeah.
Then the the value of the house, you're able to deduct one hundred thousand, so it's a four hundred thousand dollar house. And presumably then the the amount that you're paying is correspondingly.
I definitely get that assessment. So have you seen this other communities, Paul?
Yeah, uh, most of my towns have it.
Have the exemption, whatever. Is it usually of that magnitude of a hundred thousand? The lowest test town is a probably uh houses are probably around four, I'm guessing. Have you seen a hundred thousand exemption?
That it should be higher. Uh, that the exemption should be much higher because the property values have gone way up.
That's what I was thinking. I might consider supporting it maybe with a higher exemption. I know if I wouldn't.
The statute said.
Yeah, I think you you your only choice is a hundred thousand or or not.
You know, Eric, uh, to to your point about what we're what we spend the money on, and I know that uh you and maybe others would be worried that this is going to be spent on what what they consider frivolous things, things we don't really need and otherwise wouldn't be wouldn't be spending it on. Uh, your same comment that you had on the ARPA funds, and I think it's justified. Uh, there is uh the extra control that this money is controlled by a uh CPA committee, Community Preservation Act Board or Committee. I forget what they call it. And I also forget how that committee is appointed, but uh, the committee is also subject to approval by the town and the opinion of the town. So you know, we we do have uh, we do have input on what that money can and can't be spent for.
And Paul identified that it's still has got approved by town meeting, but I still think once you have it, they're gonna make up pet projects. That's what that's the term that I use is they're gonna make up pet projects. That's why I thought it was kind of a a false indicator. We said, you know, there are so many projects in the last twenty years we would have spent on. I don't think it would have. I think we have made up other projects and still spent tax money on on those projects in the last twenty years. That's that's my opinion. It's what I've observed. I think it's uh you just look at the ARPA and it's back up, and it's another reason that I I don't think this really, you know, um I just don't think it's a good fit for Sherburne. You know, fair amount of communities, I I think, like, frame use it to actually buy conservation land and so on. I mean, that's uh, what do you call it?
It's also been used to buy uh properties that then can be used for affordable housing, you know? It it can be used, it can be used for equipment if equipment is needed.
And I support a housing trust, too. I actually do support a housing trust to actually afford affordable housing as a separate thing. Um, I just, I have my pessimism of how this money be spent. I think it'll get to a certain point. People move forward to certain pet projects. Most people won't look into that deeply, and it'll just be additional spending.
Are you are you volunteering for the CPA committee?
No one wants me on that committee.
It is, and and for what it's worth, like, when I've seen, you know, CPA funding, um, you know, for projects showing up on um warrants and other towns, you know, each project is essentially its own warrant article, so it's not gonna get kind of like buried inside of a capital list or anything like that. It's like each each project is going to be presented and discussed and voted on separately by the entire town. Um, so you know, most of the projects that I've seen, it's like that you you can see that it is a sort of well-conceptualized project that really needs to be sold to the town. And realistically, I feel like if you look at the things that um uh are allowable, it's like, really, most of the recreation commissions, uh, you know, things that they want to do would qualify, you know, anything that we do for uh Woodhaven and Leland and and the other affordable housing projects that are coming down the pipeline, like, they would all be eligible, you know? Um, you know, some of the library things are eligible, I think, um uh, yeah, you know, obviously, we have a lot of open space in town, so a lot of those things would be eligible. Everything every time the historical commission, you know, wants to do something and we're spending money on it, it's like th- those things are probably eligible. So, given that we have, we're gonna approve a pretty small amount, you know, we're not gonna be doing million-dollar project after million-dollar project that are just all um frivolous, you know? I think they're they're pretty small projects, and there's a pretty small amount of money that's available, and I think most of the the eligible committees in town um are probably gonna use up that money pretty quickly for, you know, uh, things that they truly want and would probably be asking the town for anyways.
Okay, well, I think we're really only voting whether to open the warrant and add this article. So
I I won't support that article.
We can amend it.
As as amended, I was gonna continue that, yes, but but we what we're voting on is just whether to add the CPA in whatever formats to the warrant. It's not currently on the warrant. So.
I'd like to make a motion to open the um.
Yeah, I think that's what I'm just gonna suggest.
Because we have to do it separately, right? We have to move to open the warrant, then move to add something, and then move to close the warrant.
I believe that's correct, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion to open the uh the warrant.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we'll do a roll call. Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. So the warrant is now open. So now, do you want to make a motion to add the article with the agreed-upon language?
Yeah, I'll move to add an article to the warrant um for adopting the Community Preservation Act uh with the language as provided in the uh public packet, but with amendments to specify a one percent surcharge and a one hundred thousand dollar um residential property exemption.
I'll second that.
Okay, are there any discussion of that before we vote? All right, so we'll do a roll call vote on this. Eric?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Like I said, I'm fine with that and it's the warrant, but I probably won't vote for the article, but that's good that we went through that exercise, I think. Thank you for your input, everyone.
Uh now can I move to close the warrant?
Yes, please do. Is there a second? All right, Eric?
Um I.
Stephen.
I.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
And I am I as well. That was a good discussion. I'm glad we went through it. Um the operating budget, uh no, I'm sorry, draft warrant articles, Jeremy. We have the list here and then we have the actual copy of the warrant.
Yep, um so yeah, in your packet is a is a summary of what's currently on the warrant. Um now with the addition of the CPA that makes eighteen warrant articles. Um generally, you know, a lot of general um routine business uh included. Listed on the summary checklist, you know, the checklist there, uh we did include the current um capital projects separated out by ones that would be funded with excluded debt and ones that would be funded by free cash. I just wanted to point that out in the checklist. And also, uh a new art, a new item, a new warrant article that that hadn't been seen in the past, but seems to be the will of the Capital Budget Committee and Advisory was to add a warrant article for things that didn't qualify as capital, but were uh equipment and supplies purchases that were outside of the operating budget. So you'll see uh currently one article number nine called Equipment and Supplies Purchases Non-Capital. There's a list of items there that could be like called small capital, but there was a preference not to use the word capital in the in the definition. Those would all be free cash funded, but they're below the twenty five thousand dollar threshold for capital that is defined in the bylaw. Uh other ones that are non-normal are uh to vote to uh set aside the funds for the opioid settlement, uh in particular, the past funds that we've received. There then then, you know, have tho- those funds available for um uh implementation and use. Also included, um there was a request for from Art Specialties. Um I believe they're at eleven South Main Street uh for the uh request to convert their current wine and beer alcohol uh retail license, you know, uh not to be drunk on premises, but to convert that to a full license. Uh that would require special legislation to be filed with the the General Court. Um so um that was a request for for it to be considered on the town warrant. Um the Personnel Board is working on an amendments or updates to the Personnel Administration Plan that may or may not be ready for prime time, but they've requested a warrant article to be included. Uh and then the zoning, I mean, the Planning Board has three articles related to the zoning bylaw um that they are currently discussing uh um uh including the the multifamily overlay or three A zoning, an update to the affordable housing uh requirements uh and um the ground mounted solar bylaw. The public hearings haven't been held yet with the Planning Board and the the wording and the the wording on all of the town meeting warrant articles is still in draft form. So I'm not looking to to get your approval or vote on the warrant, but wanted to get your input to make sure that you were generally in 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 favor of what is being considered here for the warrant. Uh and there's one citizen's petition that was filed that would be an amendment to the Personal Administration Plan uh specifically related to longevity to include the one elected position that wasn't previously included, the town clerk's position. So that is a a general summary of what the the town meeting warrant looks like right now.
So could I say a few things?
Absolutely, Paul.
So the first thing is by state law, whenever we receive a zoning bylaw, proposed zoning bylaw, we are required to take a vote to refer to the Planning Board for a public hearing. And based on what you said, Jeremy, I don't know whether we received these bylaws or we haven't. Now receipt of it means sent to us in any way by the Planning Board or by citizens or anybody who sends us a zoning bylaw, we are required to take a vote to refer to the Planning Board. Until that happens, they can't have the public hearing. So it's good they haven't had the public hearing because we need to refer to them. But if they're not if they're not done and they're only in drafts, I'm I'm really confused to fit what you said into the the legal framework. So I I understand. It's like speaking different language. I'm a lawyer. I have this matrix of things. But what you said doesn't fit that matrix. So if we receive proposed zoning bylaws, then I need to make a motion to refer those articles to the Planning Board. If we haven't received them and there are only things that we hear about and you've you've located and and put into the draft warrant, then I I don't need to do that. So where where are we on this?
I will say we have received the disinformation from the Planning Board. Um they they have not finalized the specifics of those changes, but we have requests, have received requests to include these items on the warrant. And and the zoning bylaw changes.
Do we have their proposed draft language for the changes for these bylaws? We don't, right? Uh my understanding was that these were essentially still just placeholders because the Planning Board was thinking about um doing them, but um but I don't I don't know if you've got more information. Um Ma- Marion, you you probably have something to add here.
Let me ask a clarifying question before we do, though. Which ones are you considering zoning? There's two that say ZBL, but wouldn't creating a multifamily overlay district also be a zoning bylaw?
Yeah, I think that would be.
So there's there's three, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen that we're talking about, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh I see Genie's on the Genie. Have we received any additional information other than the 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 request to have these on the warrant?
Yeah. Yeah, so I think um I was at Planning Board this week, earlier this week, and uh it it was clear that they're still working on the uh on the overlay district bylaw uh and but they they have a a public hearing already scheduled, so I guess they shouldn't have scheduled that public hearing yet. They have to refer it to the Select Board first. Is that correct, Paul?
Yeah, well, all of this doesn't fit because we voted to close the warrant. They had to deliver by the close their proposed warrant articles. So here they here we are. I mean, isn't the warrant closed?
We just closed it. Five minutes ago, ten minutes ago, whatever.
Did they deliver a draft? Uh will a draft hold it open? Because
Doesn't hold it open. If that's that's then is where we're going with the warrant. That means we then send it to them for have a public hearing on that article.
Right.
Which point they can move to to uh uh do a motion at town meeting that amends it. But pretty much the warrant, that that those warrant articles need to have been done by the time we close the warrant.
Well, uh I'm pretty sure none of the three of those are done. In fact, at the at the uh Planning Board meeting, Article, what is it, sixteen ground mounted solar, they decided to uh kick down the road till next year.
Did we get the Attorney General's decision?
Not yet. No, that's why they decided to kick it down the road because they haven't gotten that decision. And they don't know how to finalize a uh a revision of that bylaw.
Okay.
Well, not only that, but um uh Dan, I'm not sure if you're listening. When is the advisory public hearing this year? I've looked at my calendar. I didn't spot it.
It's March sixteenth, Saturday, March sixteenth.
Yeah, so the odds of them having this hearing, when what's their hearing date, Marion, do you know?
Uh well, for the overlay district, the three A MBTA Communities Act, uh their hearing is two weeks from Tuesday, I think, two weeks from last.
The twentieth.
Twentieth, that's right.
Have they advertised it already?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. I was just trying to think if the timing was even realistic.
Well, if they if they've scheduled a hearing for that article, then I want to make a motion. I want to move that the article, having been received by us, be referred to the Planning Board for a public hearing.
And that's for the um which one are you doing that one for? That's for the um
That's fourteen.
Solar.
MB, no, the MBTA Communities Act.
That's Article fourteen.
So it what what I heard was Article sixteen is being withdrawn, which is the ground mounted solar.
That's what I heard Tuesday night, but this isn't the official uh report. This is just a uh a bystander.
Okay. So do do we want to? Are we going to do motions individually, Paul? What about the affordable housing, the um item fifteen is listed here?
So I I know nothing about that. I haven't seen it. I mean.
Genie knows something.
Genie, Mike. Yeah, Heidi has been working on the uh language for the affordable housing. It's not, there's not major changes. There's like a number, uh one is like from units of six to two. Um she had some problems with the formatting. Um we think we've got it done, so I believe they're gonna have a a public hearing on that also, but they did ask for it to be a placeholder on the warrant.
So it wouldn't be the same hearing as the uh Article fourteen item, the overlay district.
That I am not sure. I think they wanted to do it in the same night, but I can't tell you definitely.
Okay.
So all all these boards and committees need to be working as a team.
Yes.
Advisory has its re- its schedule. We have our schedule. Planning Board has the schedule. They're all supposed to be coordinated. That's why we closed the warrant, so we have all these articles. That's so when the advisory has a hearing, they're actually hearing articles that are on the warrant, not drafts that might be withdrawn. I mean, all the stuff that is being described about the Planning Board, that stuff for October and November and maybe as late as January, but never in February. Are you working in drafts?
Well, well, we've had, uh we've had some transition in the Planning Board this year with the town planner changing and now the Chair of the Planning Board changing.
Um I just I real quick, I just checked their agenda for the twentieth, and it does include the Affordable Housing Bylaw.
Okay.
So can I broaden the motion to include those two or fourteen and fifteen?
Yes. And what your motion is to the request the Planning Board to hold a public hearing on those two
Yeah.
bylaws that we don't have the language for. Does that sound right?
Well, I don't want to put it that way because that's not a legal.
I know, I'm being facetious.
So the legal motion would be that we're we we that we acknowledge receipt of two zoning articles, proposed zoning articles, and that those articles as received be referred to the Planning Board for a public hearing.
Okay, is there a second?
Problem is, we haven't received them, so how do we actually do that?
Well, I we're saying that we did receive. Jeremy, I thought said we got.
Oh, we have drafts, yeah.
So whatever that draft is, that's what the public hearing needs to be on.
Okay. So we have a second for Paul's motion? Okay, I'll second his motion to ask them to, uh I will second the motion to ask them to hold a public hearing on um uh two zoning bylaw changes. One is the multifamily overlay district and the second is the affordable housing um one. So we have a motion of the second. Do we want any more discussion before we vote?
Just a little side comment, which is that zoning bylaws, unlike other bylaws, are retroactive to the date of first publication. The date of first publication is the date for the public hearing.
Okay.
So that, like a general bylaw only takes effect when approved by the Attorney General. But zoning bylaws, when they're approved by the Attorney General, go back to the date of the publication of the public hearing. So if you have something, it's all blank.
Oh, sure.
You got a problem.
But but if Paul, if those bylaws are at the at the date of the the date that the public hearing is is announced um are not in their final form, what goes, and it's retroactive to um a bylaw at the public hearing that's not in its final form, then any changes beyond that or that occur after the public hearing are invalid? Is that is that what you're saying?
No, they're not invalid. They all relate back.
So even if something is uh changed at the town meeting, which we like to do all the time to the Planning Board, um that those changes that were done at town meeting still apply retroactively?
Yep. That's why the rules for planning boards are very strict. They gotta dot every I, they gotta cross every T, or the Attorney General's gonna throw them out.
I I am uncomfortable with this vote right now.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of moving parts and pieces here, but we're really just asking them. I mean, I I it doesn't seem realistic to me that they can get the language completed, even if they have the hearing, you know, with everything that they're going through right now. It doesn't seem schedule wise to be realistic.
Well, then they should withhold it. And bring it back.
Problem is that the the MBDA MBTA Communities Act is really time sensitive.
Do you, Marion, do you happen to know when is the deadline for for that for Sherburne in terms of you know, making our progress towards an overlay district?
Uh I do not. And yeah.
I I believe it's the end of twenty twenty five, so from my understanding, we may have the benefit of two town meetings.
So we could punt it to, yeah.
I will, I believe there the latest information on the the MBT zoning zoning is on the Planning Board's website published. If that gives you any comfort, um.
So one other little footnote here is that I've been working with the Attorney General's Office. They want to see these zoning bylaw MBTA compliance achieved. And so they've offered to assist communities pre-approve the articles. And so an invitation went out to all of the MBTA communities asking for offering to help with drafts if people would submit it to the Attorney General's Office. They would make a preliminary determination as to whether it complies or it doesn't comply, what needs to be changed. And ten communities responded. And they were saying to me, where 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 are the rest of the communities? Go go because I represent eight other communities, go get them. But of the ten that replied, Sherburne replied and asked the Attorney General to review their bylaw. So I know.
Yeah, I'm I'm looking right now, Jeremy, because Jeremy said go to the website and there is a draft bylaw that's on the website, so I I would say that qualifies as we have a draft of that one. Because it exists. It's dated November seventh, but you know, there is a draft and it can get updated at the public hearing, but we do have a draft, so.
Is is the uh is the affordable housing one there as long as you're on the website?
Well, the because the Affordable Housing Bylaw already exists, so that that's on the website as it exists. Um I don't.
Modifications to it.
Yeah, I don't see the modification, but I think as um Genie was saying, I think they already know what the changes are, so I think that those um I I don't think it's still a work in progress, right? I don't know if uh Marion, did they discuss that one uh at the meeting this week?
Uh they they did uh briefly. No, I wouldn't say it's still a work in progress. I think they have that one pretty much nailed down.
Yeah, okay, yeah, all right. I feel much more comfortable taking this vote now.
All right, so uh do you you have your hand up, Genie? Do you want to say anything before we vote?
One last, I I can ask Heidi um if I can send you the the draft. One last, I I can ask Heidi um, if I can send you the the draft Affordable Housing one that I helped to format format. Uh, but I'd rather have her do it, but I'm pretty sure it's it's there.
Okay, that's fine.
Well, the advertisement for the public hearing needs to include the the language of the proposed.
It will.
Articles. So if they're having a hearing in two weeks, they had. They have to, the hearing requires, I think, a minimum of fourteen days notice, so they had to have already published. The articles for the public to know. And be informed when they come to the public hearing.
Well, we'll check, check into that. We'll check into that, I think.
Right, I I'll look into that tomorrow.
Does this need to be done for the um, MBTA one? Because I believe the planning board has a hearing scheduled for that.
Yeah.
Okay. So we, I mean, do we need to refer to them? Do we need to refer, because they have one scheduled, or is it just going through the motions we're supposed to do?
We're just going through the motions.
It's something that general laws require us to do. If we don't do it, then this. You got the Attorney General out there. When these things get passed, the Attorney General requires the town clerk to give a full report of all the doings. The time.
There we go. They they did, they now I see, yes, this is the uh, the documents included in their hearing announcement. Oh, no, it was, those are the documents included. In the agenda of the last meeting, and I see this is again on February twentieth, so this is the hearing, yeah. So they they have put them up there.
Okay.
Well, except you said that they're removing the ground mounted solar, though. They're pulling that back, and you say?
Yeah, yeah.
So that one will, even though it says January twenty-ninth there, that one. And probably the solar map.
Yeah, that that'll be gone.
Okay.
So I think we could beat this up. Can I just make a motion just to refer the zoning articles to the planning board for a hearing? Do you need me to name the article, or can I simply make that statement?
Okay.
Well, the two articles are the fam- multi-family overlay district and the affordable housing.
Okay.
Yeah, there's already a motion on the table.
Oh, is it? Okay, good. I'll second it then.
Second it, so let's vote. Eric.
Hi.
Steven.
Hi.
Paul.
Hi.
Marion.
Hi.
And I am I as well. Now, we've gone through the war. Go ahead, Paul.
Other comments. I mean, I got comments almost on everything this.
Yeah, that's what I was just gonna go back to, the other articles.
So there's an article here about the opioid settlement. So one of the things we did at the state level was to pass a law. That has created. Something called a reserve for appropriation account. For opioid settlements. And all you need to do is to move the money into that account. And I don't know what this opioid reme- remediation fund is, but it looks like. Why don't we just do what the general court told us to do? Let's put it that way. Then. The way this article is set up.
It lists proponent, it's the select board. I don't know who put, who drafted it.
And I I did, Jeff. My understanding, Paul, from um, our accounting firm was that it had to go to a town meeting vote to be put in the special revenue fund.
Yes.
And then once it's put in the so- special revenue fund, we can spend it without any appropriation.
Correct, so. The the usually the the stuff has gone to free cash by now.
Yeah, it has gone into free cash.
So it's a transfer from free cash, but it's actually the the money that was received. It's set up so it can go to the special revenue fund. You'd need a town meeting vote to take it out of free cash and put it in. Uh. That's what it should be, but it says opioid remediation fund. It does is using different language.
Oh.
I prefer a motion, a article that would specifically refer to the new statute. And say that basically Sherburne is. Complying with that statute.
Okay.
It's made a transfer into the fund created by. Uh, forty-four fifty-three. Clause four.
Okay, yeah, we can do that, no problem.
Paul, how was that? Uh, that must be a recent statute update. Is that like within the last couple few months?
Yeah.
Okay.
So do you want to, if they do that, you want to review the final language for the article then, Paul?
Well, I'm not the town's lawyer. The you have you have town council. Uh, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. I didn't have to throw this very hard, did I?
Then then the Article twelve, this additional alcohol license. So this is a a issue statewide where communities are trying to. Increase the number of alcohol licenses. It's. It's kind, it's the thing left over from prohibition that. You have to get approval for all these licenses beyond the the quota system from the general court, and the general court's been very reluctant to give it up. But the municipal modernization bill that. We all filed. That hopefully be enacted by um, March is going to change that and make it easier. So there's gonna be a new set of things uh. Which I am hoping will make Article twelve obsolete. But I don't know if it's gonna. How it's gonna be amended, or how it's gonna end up finally enacted, but the. The whole issue of requiring communities to file these individual. One-on-one. Home rule petitions. For a liquor license. In this day and age, almost every restaurant needs a liquor license. People like to go to restaurants that have liquor licenses. They like to have a little wine with their dinner. We're trying to modernize that. We're trying to get away from the system. So this article correctly represents the existing system. But hopefully by March. It's gonna be gone with something better.
Okay.
Um, what are they looking for? Are they looking to do hard alcohol or to serve on site?
No, they're looking for the retail sale, not to be drunk on premises, but a full license. They currently have a beer and wine license. They'd like to have, they have four, uh, four or five other locations and uh, some of the, in other communities. Uh, where they do have the full license, and they are located to ex- expand that service to their location here in Sherburne.
Yeah, I think it's Belmont and Maderd, if I recall.
Who's who's this for?
It's the store that's next, yeah, the one that's. Whatever, it used to be the saddle store when I first moved to Sherburne, whatever that building's called, you know, they used to be Dilber Sandwich Shop was underneath it.
Art Specialties.
Art Specialties, right next to the Sidco. Okay.
The last.
So we're gonna leave the Article twelve alone for now, and then you think we may. Find out maybe by the advisory public hearing that we can. We recommend no action on that article? Is that what you're saying?
Or we may have to do something different.
Okay.
Than this.
All right.
Uh, one other comment is is uh, on the citizen article.
Yes.
It has to go in the warrant as as printed. But for citizen articles, I always recommend to all my communities, you bring in the citizen petitioner. And you have a discussion. So the board should bring the citizen in. And listen to why and how and what it's all about.
I I believe she is here.
Is Dan. He's on the phone call. She was the uh, the champion. Uh, we're gonna have her come back more prepared at another meeting.
That's that's not fair. Just catch her off guard, but.
Yeah.
Generally, it's it's good practice with with citizens feel. Motivated enough to go out and get signatures.
It is Nancy has is on, is on the board here. Is she not present?
She's shown there, and she she had a camera on when she first joined.
She's muted. Nancy, you're muted. If you can hear me.
But we meet in two weeks from now. Can we just do it two weeks from now?
Yeah, she may not be prepared tonight.
Yeah.
We can come back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did step away.
I don't know, that's okay, but we didn't know if you would wanna just describe the article to us tonight, or if you would rather do it two weeks from tonight. I'm not sure if you're ready.
Uh, well, if you just want. A very basic thing, I can do that. And that's, um, if you remember correctly, the Personnel Board did a longevity article last year that was accepted and um. The it included everyone who is benefited eligible, except those who are able to negotiate contracts or were part of units with you, uh, unions where they could. Negotiate a contract to include longevity. And because of the complexity of including elected officials, uh, they chose to. Put them in the exclusion too, because they were afraid. Trying to explain to people that because elected officials, as you see in all of your little warrants, there's an asterisk. Must have exactly all compensation that's given to them noted in. And elect and voted by the town, that it would be a two-step process. So and if you remember your discussions, at the time that that article came before you, you were trying to figure out a way to get around that, that would give the. The one elected official that's still benefited um. Uh, the a compensation that would be equivalent to that, and because the longevity article says. Uh, that that position, that all elected benefited positions were excluded. I don't. Didn't see how you're gonna work around that without. Contradicting your your longevity thing, so I thought the easiest thing to do is to go back to town meeting and. Take that uh, exclusion out of the language so that. And eh eh, because in every other way, the elected official is would be entitled to. The longevity policy, so I have tried to make it as simple and straightforward in that article. Uh, that I, the the citizen's petition. That that's what we're trying to do. We're just trying to. Fix what we couldn't do last year.
Is this coming from the Personnel Board, then?
It it is not. I am not a member of the Personnel Board anymore. Not, and I don't know if you have a replacement for that or not, but. If not, you don't have a Personnel Board. Because you have to have three members. I I have asked them to submit it to the Personnel Board, because it is a. It is a change to the um. To the administration plan.
We have another article proposed here that's mostly for the Personnel Board. If there's no Personnel Board, where did that article come from?
I don't know, maybe you have a third member?
That that one's, uh, I think. Kind of tentative also, isn't it, Jeremy? They were, they're not. Totally sure that they'll have it. It's amending the Personnel Administration Plan, Article thirteen.
It's it's repealing it, basically. And then restating it.
Mm-hmm.
And says it's simple. It's available for inspection at the Select Board Office. So could I have a copy of it?
Doesn't exist yet, Paul.
Well, again, what was the date that we closed the warrant?
Ten minutes ago. Actually, it's been like an hour ago now.
No. I mean.
Yes, yes, I know. I I think this one, I think, is probably gonna be too late, because they won't have. Uh, A, they have.
Mentioned, I've mentioned to the Chair of the Personnel Board that there's there's probably not enough time to get this to the finish line.
Yeah.
Do we have a three-member Personnel Board, or or do we not?
There are currently two members. I've inquired to to Town Council, um, their opinion and and should have that um, response back shortly.
So.
The two current members constitute a quorum, um, and. It can function as a Personnel Board, but it have a a separate um, issue that we're. Would question.
Uh, I I'm confused. This citizen's petition is basically a Personnel Administration issue. Wouldn't that have to come from the Personnel Board?
No.
It does not.
No, the bylaw says that anyone can. Can put forward a change to the personnel plan, but it does have to come before the town meeting. And it's supposed to be, they're supposed to get a copy. Uh, prior to the meeting, and I'm assuming that the two members have, but I I don't know whether they're gonna be another member or not before this. Takes. It's thirty days before the meeting that they're supposed to get a copy.
I, uh. Do you have any sense as to how the Personnel Board might think about this?
I haven't discussed it. I haven't discussed anything with the Personnel Board since I left.
Okay.
But I know last year when we were trying to put the longevity before the board, they they had a. Feeling that they were afraid it would fail. Because of the confusion if we tried to include this at this time, and I know you had a lengthy discussion about how you could work around. That, so this is. One of the things that I would have liked to have accomplished before I left the board, but I didn't have the chance to, so. It is a citizen's petition, and it had a lot of support. Because there is only one person that's being excluded from being able to participate in the longevity program.
But but Nancy, you say it did have a lot of support on the Board. I I just.
Uh, no, I say my, the petition had a lot of support. It made a lot of sense to people.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
My my question, my general question about this is, uh, Nancy, nothing against a citizen's petition. Uh, I understand. But I guess a citizen's petition then could uh. Could propose a a change to a bylaw? Or the word eh, anything in the purview of any other board and and it's legal, is that correct? Okay, well, that's good. Okay.
It's a citizen right of democracy.
Don't get any ideas, Marion. Don't get any ideas. We had enough, we had enough of problems here. Well, I mean, it's a citizen's petition article, so I think that um.
It has to go to the warrant, that's written.
Exactly, and and I um. The the language is as written here. Is is this the full language that's listed here? Nancy or Jeremy?
I don't know what you have.
Yeah, I believe that is, that's the uh, word for word, um, letter for letter, uh, language in the citizen's petition.
It's one sentence, basically, kind of a truncated sentence.
Including that there's like four periods and then the.
Yeah.
Um, it's it's a carbon copy of what was on the the paperwork submitted to the town court.
Okay. So I don't think.
That's all I had at this, at this point on the warrant.
Okay, that sounds good.
My my only question, uh, I'm assuming that it's legal, but with the um, thing about the non-capital items. Just, is that a? Is that a legal use of free cash at town meeting to just use it to buy stuff that's below the capital threshold? I just, I don't, I don't recall that that had happened before. While I was on advisory, but I'm assuming it is.
Use free cash for anything.
It did, it did before you joined the board. We used to use free cash for a amount, but the problem was that, as we always said, it's not free, and it's not cash, because. We didn't actually have the funds. It wasn't something that was available to I first to. Call up John Deere and order a new tractor.
Okay.
All right, so I think eh eh, anything else on the um? Warrant articles? I don't think so. We covered that in the next.
Nothing else, Jeff, but yeah, thank you. We've got some work to do to clean this up.
Yeah, and and the next thing is um. I don't know if you have, there was nothing in the packet on the warrant, on the um. Operating budget updates. Is it just you telling us the status of it, kinda?
Yeah, and I can send you a summary as well, but um, some good news that was relayed or discussed at. Uh, the recent school committee meetings this week, and and related to advisory by the the liaisons to the school committee. Um, both the local schools and the regional schools have. A a draft version two of their budgets. Um, that um, significantly sharpened the pencils as far as what they're propos- gonna be proposing for their budget. Um, so just to to give you a sense of that. The local schools had previously proposed an eight percent increase. They're now down to a three point nine nine percent increase to their budget for FY twenty-five. The regional schools had proposed. I believe it was close to a six percent increase, and now they're currently at a three point six one percent increase, so. Uh, with those changes, it's reduced the budget request for FY twenty-five by almost six hundred thousand dollars. Um, which is is great news, so. Overall, the total budget request now for FY twenty-five. Is now at a four. Um, is now at a four percent increase. Um, and previously, uh, when I came before you to present the the budget previously. Uh, it had been at a five point seven percent increase. So um. You know, with those changes from the schools and there's been some some minor edits on the municipal side as well as being discussed with the advisory committee. Um, the uh, the budget picture for FY twenty five is is looking a little bit um, a little better. So I just wanted to update the board on that.
Do you have a calculation for the um, excess levy capacity after those changes like?
I do.
It was only at like two hundred thousand or something before, right?
Yeah, actually, let me show, I made a little graphic that was gonna not show you, but I think with that question. Um, it would be helpful.
Jeremy, I just wanted to interject that I really appreciate the summaries that you've done on the uh. On the town finances in general. I heard it again last night at advisory and it it just, it's. Really helpful.
Sorry, it took me a little while with.
Wow, yeah, there you go.
So here's the revision, uh, as it sits currently, um, with the 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 major changes shown here on the education line items. And there's been some minor edits to town government. Uh, we should hear relatively soon about from Maya, our health insurance carrier, um. Uh, if the eight and a half percent is something that will continue to hold, hopefully that will also go down. Um, I think they gave us something that was a little conservative, so we may see some some budget relief there as well. And also may see some in the general property insurance property, uh, insurance for the town. But as far as your question, Steve, as far as excess levy capacity. Uh, the previous version of the budget was is shown on in the orange line going into FY twenty five. With the excess levy capacity being reduced down to one, uh, one hundred and twenty-two thousand. With the current revisions, the excess levy capacity would still degrees decrease, but only decrease down to six hundred and seventy-one thousand. So you you'd still have six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars in uh, excess levy capacity. If the current draft of the budget was approved, which is a significant increase from where we were sitting about a month ago.
It's huge. And if you look back to two thousand nineteen, it shows us being at eight fifty-nine. So it's not that.
Still reducing, you know, you're still using some of your excess levy capacity, but not nearly as fast as the previous draft of the budget had.
Yep, yep. And and they've eliminated their capital projects as well.
They deferred, regional capital was deferred from this year.
Okay, yeah. So do, should we move on uh, to ARPA then next?
So I just related to the capital budget, um. I think it's timely to talk about the status of some of the ARPA spending. I don't have project proponents here tonight, but I just wanted to show you, there's a couple of projects that. Um, that we've discussed that that are certainly that are ready to be reallocated.
Yep, yep.
Included in your packet. And so here's a summary. This is a building off of uh, periodically deb updates the status of ARPA funding. I took that, the most recent update and added a little bit of information to make it uh, sort of a little more readable for. For what you might want to consider tonight. Um, up on top is the ARPA funds. You know, total ARPA funding provided to the town, one point three million. And then the listing of projects that the select board have uh, formally voted and appropriated the ARPA funds to and the status of their spending. Um, and just a quick recap that there's still about two hundred and forty thousand dollars of ARPA funding that has not been formally voted. For for use by the select board. Some of that had been earmarked towards projects such as. Some additional funds to the farm pond stormwater project in the era irrigation at Laurel Fields. Um, but there is taking those sort of set asides away, there is uh, about twenty thousand dollars in. Um, unspoken for unvoted ARPA funds. Um, but as far as two projects that are either complete or. Uh, we just don't need the funding. We will not be able to spend that, spend the ARPA funding in time would be the digitization of town records. Uh, currently, there's a balance of fifty-one thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars and thirteen cents. In ARPA funds that had previously been voted by the board that we just don't feel that we're going to be able to expend in the timeframe required. And the town solar project, the other highlighted one in yellow, that had envisioned two different projects. The the fire station solar and a solar at the transfer station. The the fire, uh, the solar at the transfer station doesn't seem viable. It's a small project. Um, it just doesn't seem like a viable project at this time. So um, with not carrying a board with that project, there's. Uh, after we pay the final bill for the fire station solar, there would be twenty thousand, five hundred and sixteen dollars available to be reallocated. So uh, with those two projects, uh, that comes up to seventy-one thousand, six hundred ninety dollars that. Um, can can be reallocated at this time, uh, put back in the the kitty, um, or. Or used for another purpose. Um, you'll note in the, the capital proposed for FY twenty-five proposed using three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free cash to fund the proposals. Um, it would certainly be an an easy thing to do to to reallocate some of these ARPA funds to fund. Uh, maybe like the police cruiser, um, that is proposed in the F, in the FY twenty-five budget. Um, and remove it from the capital plan. So. Just wanted to bring this back to the board to to get your feeling on what you want to do with ARPA. Um, highlight the, these two current projects that that could be reallocated now or where your votes reduced. To 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 put the funds back in the kitty. And also to note that we we certainly need to to track three other projects, the transformation of town campus. The irrigation of Laurel Fields and the farm pond stormwater replacement of the stair. We need to continue to track um, the spending and our ability to to carry on with those projects. So just wanted to put that on the radar.
Yeah, I think the Laurel.
Likely want to get the champions of those three projects back before you to to give an update on the status.
Have they done the uh, well enhancement yet?
The vendors scheduled to come out in the next couple of weeks to do the the well enhancement.
Yeah, cause that's the one, that's two, there's actually up above unspent forty thousand and then the one ninety. So there's two hundred thirty thousand dollars of. Unspent semi-allocated money to Laurel.
Yep.
So, so if it's not really viable, I'd.
And uh, the the funds have to all be allocated by the end of. This calendar year, is that, is that accurate?
Yeah, accurate, meaning you have to have contracted, I think, also, don't you? You you have to have.
Essentially, it's kind of unclear what they mean by, you know, uh, allocated or or. Generally, it means entered into a contract for.
Yes.
And then we have another year to actually spend the funds.
Spend it by the end of twenty-five, uh, or calendar year twenty-five.
But if we wanted to use this for capital stuff, we basically would have to make that decision by. We need to make that decision by town meeting this year, basically, right?
Yeah, if you wanted to offset some of the, the current FY twenty-five capitals request funded by ARPA, yeah, you'd want to do that relatively soon.
Certain BPW people want to take down trees.
Coming here.
We've got DPW people that want to take down trees. Uh, I think Dan uh, was first and then Sean.
I I was just gonna reiterate what Steve said a minute ago. Um, and and maybe pick up on a theme of errors from a year ago, but it would be very helpful for advisory if the board were able to. Make decisions in time for town meeting. And so. A lot of projects on the table, if some of these funds and the judgment of the board could, should be reallocated. Uh, you know, that would uh, affect decisions that advisory would make, what what the motions would look like for town meetings. So. On Steve's point, would be very helpful to reallocate. And whether it's trees or other capital projects like the cruiser that Jeremy mentioned, uh, you know, uh. All of those seem like, and to 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 me, this is just me speaking, haven't haven't run this by advisory, but all strike me as interesting possibilities and ways to. Potentially reallocate these funds.
Well, there's definitely seventy-one thousand, seven hundred dollars or whatever it is here. That we already have highlighted in yellow as reallocating for the digit, the digitization in the solar projects. So there's definitely just under seventy-two thousand there.
Yep.
Do we want to vote tonight, Jeremy, to reallocate those two?
Well, yeah, I I'd suggest that you either, you know, reallocate them to another project or to one of the capital projects for FY twenty-five. Or or at least remove it from those projects and put it back in the general kitty of uh, unvoted, unallocated funds.
We could vote to take that first step. We could vote to take that first step tonight and get those funds back into the general ARPA pot so that. Think more clearly about what we've got.
Yeah, we don't actually have any funds in the general, oh.
We have like seventeen, nineteen thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Technically unvoted, you have two hundred and thirty-nine thousand unvoted. So of that, you've sort of indicated potential use.
Okay. So I think we, we should make that motion because that would help, uh. The only thing about those are those definitely are not needed. And I don't, you know, I'm not sure of these other items, but those could actually be. I would want advisory's recommendation on what projects to allocate them to, that I don't think we should select the project.
Yeah, I mean, to some degree, I feel like um, it's more effective if we can purchase. Something that would be um, a debt service, right? Cause that's actually going to affect the tax rate, whereas replacing free cash with ARPA money doesn't actually. Alter the tax rate. So I'd, I'd, I'd want to look at the, the amounts of all of those um, debt service projects. To see if we can scrape together enough ARPA money to pay for one of those outright.
And it would be happy to offer an opinion on that, but of course, it's the select board that controls these funds and has to make that decision.
I couldn't agree more with what Sean, with Stephen just said, something that's already on our capital plan. And something that's gonna go to debt, because it's gonna need an override. I'll vote for pretty much anything. That'll do that.
So um, did you have any other comment you wanted to make, Dan?
No, I'm all set. Let me drop my hand. Thanks.
Okay, and so uh, Sean's hand is up. Go ahead, Sean. I read the chat though. I read the chat for you.
You're really choppy, Sean.
You're, we can't hear you super well.
Maybe kill your video.
Oh, did you cut out? Where did he go?
Sean, try cutting your video. Maybe your, your bandwidth.
He dropped altogether. He's, he's not in the meeting.
No, I still see him.
You do?
Yeah.
Yep.
I don't. I don't see him anywhere. You do? Really? Oh, there he is. I see him. Yeah, yeah. His, his video.
We still, we still can't hear you though, Sean.
No, pretty choppy. You want, if you want to say something, type it in the chat and I'll just read it if you want.
He did.
I saw the tree comment, tree removals.
You know, we need to cut trees down.
You know, there are always the trees, but seriously, um, when trees fall, it costs us every time. So.
Yes, actually, it costs way more if they fall. It's way more expensive if they fall, but. Cause then we're doing it on emergency time, not on regular time.
So the motion here is just basically to de-allocate, de-incumber them.
That's what I would say we could do now. It's just under seventy-two thousand, whatever that is, seventy-one thousand. Um, looks like it, uh. What is the seventy-one thousand, seven hundred?
So that I um, that my thoughts are for next, you know, I've been kind of iffy on uh, appropriating the uh. Uh, roadway capital funds for FY twenty-five for next year. I would actually allocate this to DPW for their discretion. And then I actually authorize only seventy-five thousand for um, on the thing. So instead of going for zero, I'd actually authorize seventy-five thousand. Bond for next year and just allocate this. And this could, this can be decided at our next meeting, but allocate this for trees or DPW in general. You can do roadwork where for all I care. And then do um, like I said, seventy and then we cut in half, um, the FY twenty-five request. I'm not gonna vote for anything, just so you know, so spoiler alert for next meeting. I'm not for anything that does not reduce one of our um, override. Bonded FY twenty-five capital projects. So you probably get four votes anyway, but that's the only way I'm, I'm gonna, that's the only thing I'm gonna allocate to seventy-one thousand too, for my vote.
All right. So, but we could still vote tonight to take the seventy-one thousand, seven hundred. And and make it be unallocated right now.
Sure.
I think Paul already made that motion.
All right, is, is there a second?
A second.
All right. So Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
I am I as well. Do we need to do anything else on the ARPA right now, Jeremy?
Uh, no, that that was helpful. Thank you. We'll, we'll bring back um, this at your next meeting, um. And have some other ideas for you.
Okay, that sounds good. So we're actually on to the Paul's specialty, uh, making a motion on the consent agenda.
With approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Eric?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye.
Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. And then we're on to select board reports. And the select board members have reports. I was just gonna mention what you already probably know, that the um, Chair of the Planning Board resigned Monday evening. Was it Monday or what day is today? I guess it was Tuesday evening.
It was Tuesday.
So we're just notifying you of that and um, uh, because it's an elected position, uh. We've been advised that we can um, get a planning board recommendations and maybe at our next meeting, appoint someone as an interim. But it'll, it'll have to be on the uh, uh, caucus and on the uh, ballot for uh, the election to elect. Um, uh, replacement.
Wait, so does the appointment serve out the full term or is it only last until the next election?
Next election.
Next election and so David, but the candidate, if we appoint someone to fill the interim slot, they can be a candidate for election too, obviously. Go ahead, Marion.
Right, that, it's another, uh, select board reports unrelated to planning board. Um, I got a call from.
Is there anything, well, is there anything you wanted to add on the planning board as you attended? I, I thought I'd bring it up so everyone, I'm not sure if everyone knew.
Right, um, no, I I have nothing to add, I think.
Okay, they did make, Addie May was named the Chair, uh, uh, the new Chair.
I'd add something to that item, which is to thank Chris Owen for his service to the town. Wish him best going forward. All volunteers are cherished. We need to.
I know, we need more than that, but yes.
I was, I was just going to mention that Jeremy is going to kind of be the, the point person. Along with Heidi, Addie May, the Chair, uh, to uh, to navigate this. Situation with the planning board. Um, but what I wanted to report was that um, I got a call. And I have permission to say this. I got a call from uh, Rick Novak not long before this meeting. Letting me know that Murray Wolf is retiring as moderator. And you probably already had heard this or know it, but. Um, that kind of leaves the field open to suggestions as to who might be a good replacement. And time is fairly short to the next town meeting, so we should think about that. And I think Mary's not here, but. In absentia, I would thank her for doing a really, really great job in a rather thankless and difficult task.
Wait, so is she not going to moderate this upcoming town meeting?
I don't believe so.
Oh, I thought she was gonna do this years and then retires, what my understanding was.
Oh, well, is that right, Jeremy? Cause.
This would be her last, yes.
Oh, fine. Oh, then.
Yeah, I think, I think that's true, Dan. You were shaking your head also.
Yeah, yeah, but Mary's planning to do this town meeting and then she's done.
Okay, great. I wasn't sure who knew and who didn't know, so here we go.
Yeah, yeah. So that's, it's a tough role to fill. And it's stupid because you gotta fill it every year. It's only a one-year term. So they're always popular caucus. All right. Any other select board reports? All right, Harry, now Jeremy, you wanna give us any uh, town administrator reports?
Uh, yeah, sure, um. Just wanted to let everybody know the Town Forest Committee is gonna do some, they're starting some selective clearing on some town forest land between Hunting Lane and Prospect Street. Um, and near uh, the addresses of forty-seven and fifty-seven Prospect Street is where they're gonna be doing their staging. Um, so just wanted to relay that. The news is on the town website, um, and has been distributed, but I just wanted to make a, um, a mention here so you folks are aware. um, and has been distributed, but I just wanted to make a, a mention here so you folks are aware. Um, and also just uh, two updates on staffing. So our conservation administrator, unfortunately, um, has given notice she, she does not want to be uh, the, our full-time, permanent um, conservation administrator. Um, but she has said that she'll help us in the interim until we find a replacement, um, so uh, we'll be working with the conservation commission on that, uh, on filling, on filling that position. Um, and also wanted to update you on our, the status of working with um, the town of Holliston is interested in sharing a sustainability coordinator. Uh, their town administrator and chair of the select board would like to meet uh, with, with Jeff and I to talk about that possibility, so we're arranging that meeting. Um, and let's see what comes of it. That's all I've got.
All right.
Can I make a, a comment on a comment over what Jeremy just said? I want to just um, act, actually ask a question. Um, they did begin the logging uh, today in the Hunting Lane or between Hunting and Prospect. And um, I was looking for the, the, the town forest logging plan or management plan. And as far as I can find it, there is no actual plan. Uh, when they have a plan, they, well, they're just going to go in and cut trees. But uh, I'm wondering where I can find an overall town management plan, because there are different philosophies of how you manage a forest, and I would just like to know what, what it is. Maybe Sean knows.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, perfectly.
Thank God, all right. Well, I charged my battery. Uh, I'm not sure where it is. I don't, it's not posted on the website. But there is a forestry management plan and it was approved by DCR. Um, so it's not, it's not necessarily a town forest plan. It's a, of, the, the same forester that did the former plan did this one. Um, and that it, that's, that's been approved by DCR.
We, we reviewed it. Dave presented it to us also.
Correct, so it's not, you know, it's not a plan through the town of Sherburne, it's a plan through the state, and I, I would, I would we're willing to bet by midday tomorrow, we could probably have it posted, um, but I, I can't guarantee that, uh.
Uh, Jeff, did you guys review a plan for Sherburne Town Forest or surely you didn't review the state plan?
Can't remember. I thought we had reviewed it, but I don't, I don't remember how recently.
I've never seen it.
Just write down what we have, Marion, and, and make sure it's posted and get you a copy.
Okay.
There are two plans, the, the, the way the process works is that you hire a forester. Forester comes up with a plan, then you have to submit it to the state, and then the state approves or asks for modifications, and then it's sent back, and that's the plan for the forest, so it's only one plan. There's not two plans.
Right, but I haven't seen any plan at all, and I just wanted to know where I could find it.
I'll find it for you.
Okay.
You do that to get them.
How did you do that remotely? I don't know how you did that remotely, so um, just a reminder, we have three things to sign. If you can get in there, I know Stephen can. We need to sign the liquor license transfer, the library settlement, and the um, I think the warrant also. Don't we need to sign the warrant, Jeremy, also? Those are the three I had.
No, not yet. It's, the warrant isn't ready yet.
The liquor license.
We have work to do.
No, there was a third thing. We don't see any sign the warrant yet. No, we need to sign the presidential warrant.
There you go, yep.
Presidential warrant, primary, the presidential primary warrant. There's three things to be signed at town hall. I think she only needed three signatures, so I'll definitely go. If anyone else can get in there, it shouldn't take too long.
Um, what time does town hall close? I like to come during lunch. Do they close right noon or twelve thirty?
Noon, it closes at noon.
I kind of like right before then.
Yeah. They actually had to get to let the UPS guy in. She says, no, we close at noon. I said, yeah, but it's eleven fifty. This is about a month ago.
Longer, Eric, I will be here afternoon, so.
Yeah, yeah. The only thing is, I think one of them, I think uh, Jackie has to witness us signing the presidential primary warrant as the, as an actuary, I believe.
Yeah, Jackie plans to be in tomorrow.
All right, and I'm going to sign the liquor license. Go ahead, Jeannie.
Well, I just wanted to say Jackie's going to be in at eight tomorrow, and um, if you need us to stay a little longer, we certainly can.
You want to go in early, Eric, or?
Yeah, I'll, I'll come in before noon, that's why, if it's like, if it's late in the morning, don't worry, I'll be there. I'll put it in my calendar once it happens.
I'll be there later in the morning.
My other report is the ruins are up for to nothing, if you were worried about that. So do we have a motion, Paul, to adjourn? Need a second for that?
Second.
All right, uh, Eric?
Nay.
Nay, that's, that's, we know who does that. Stephen?
Aye.
Paul?
Aye, and have a good weekend, everybody.
You too, Marion?
Aye.
And I am I as well. Yeah, Mr. Yon was known for always opposing the adjournments, so thank you everyone for a good meeting tonight. Thank you, Jeremy and Diane for putting it together, and thanks for attending, Dan.